All righty. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the May meeting of your Lewisville Town Council. So good to see all of you here tonight. We have a -- we're heavy on the right side today. And we have a pastor here, so when he gets up to say the blessing, I'm going to ask him, when this congregation comes in, do they tend to sit all on the right or all on the left? Depends on where they start passing the collection plate first, I know. But welcome, everybody. Glad you're here tonight. Thank you all at home for joining us, taking time out of your dinner hour to be with us for the May meeting of your Lewisville Town Council. We'll start, as we customarily do, with our roll call of members.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Ivan Huffman.
Hi, I'm Tom Lawson.
Happy Thursday. My name's Melissa Hunt.
I'm Mike Horn.
Hi, I'm Ken Sadler.
Evening, Jane Welch.
Good Thursday evening. I'm Monte Long.
We have with us also our town manager, our town attorney, our town public works director, our town planner going around the room. I'm thinking our town communications specialist. We'll pop her head out here in a minute and wave. There she is, I think. She's back there someplace. We have our town finance director, and we'll have an introduction in just a little bit to our new town clerk. So we'll get to that in a second. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll have an invocation this evening by Reverend David Beam. He's with Mount Tabor Methodist Church. He's a guest to our own council member, Jane Welch, to lead us on our invocation. And that will be followed by our pledge of allegiance with council member Tom Lawson. Please stand if you're able.
Would you pray with me, please? Almighty and gracious God, we are grateful for a beautiful day, grateful for your presence in our lives, grateful for your grace and forgiveness. Lord, forgive us when we do fall short of being the people you've created us to be, but offer us forgiveness. And through your presence and through your spirit, lift us out of our sin and carry us. Help us to be your people. I give you thanks for these faithful servants who care for this community, for our military and law enforcement, for our first responders, for everyone who serves this community, again, in your grace and with your presence. Or be with us as this town council continues to work for the citizens of this place. Grant them a sense of your presence with them. Give them peace. Give them discernment. Give them wisdom. And hear our thanksgiving and praise as we come to you this evening. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Much gratitude to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see. Madam Manager, I think the one addition to the agenda that maybe the council members haven't seen is your introduction of our clerk.
Oh, she's on here.
She's on here?
Mm-hmm.
I thought we had something. I thought we added something here before, since the agenda went up between then and now.
I don't believe so.
If we come across it, we'll go back and readopt the agenda. With that, council members, if there are no changes or revisions to the agenda tonight, may we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Councilman Huffman and second by Councilman Monte Long. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. All righty. The consent agenda, Madam Manager.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Tonight before you, on the consent agenda, is Resolution 2025-015, financial statements for nine months ended March 31st of 2025. Approval of agenda briefing minutes from April 3rd, 2025. Approval of regular meeting minutes from April 10th, 2025. Approval of budget workshop minutes from April 14th, 2025. Approval of budget workshop minutes from April 21st, 2025. And lastly, unsealing of closed session minutes for January 4th, 2024, May 2nd, 2024, May 9th, 2024, and lastly, June 6th of 2024.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda, our items routinely come before the council. They are usually our financial reports and our minutes, and we take them as a group, unless any member on the council wishes to extract any one individual for consideration. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Welch makes the motion. Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Stacy, you have an introduction for us.
Yes. So you see, we have a new face in the room. While Dora is currently still our town clerk, she is unable to be here tonight. Congratulations to her daughter, who is graduating college. But Dora is also retiring at the end of the month. And so we are pleased to introduce Dora's successor, Mrs. Angie Lord. Angie started work with us on May 1st. She is a certified clerk from the North Carolina Association of Certified Municipal Clerks and also holds the Master Clerk certification from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Angie comes to us highly recommended with 12 years of experience. She has held in the past positions of Assistant City Clerk, Acting Deputy Clerk, Deputy Clerk, and also City Clerk. We welcome Angie to the town of Lewisville, and we are very excited that she's here, joining our team.
Very good. Welcome, Angie.
Thank you, sir.
Glad you're with us. We look forward to a long tenure.
Yes, sir.
And I know you're going to do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. All righty. Melissa, I believe you have an introduction of a guest.
I'd like to take this moment to introduce Sadie. Sadie is back in the green here, and she is a senior at West Forsyth High School. And she will be attending UNC Chapel Hill next year with aspirations in political science. So this is her first council meeting, and for those that are sitting up here, if you have an opportunity to meet with her afterwards, that'd be great. Thank you.
Very good. Welcome, Sadie. It's nice to see you. What are your plans for the summer?
I'm just getting ready for college, working, saving up money.
Well, good luck to you. All righty. We have several pieces of, several individuals to recognize this evening. First, we're going to start with our town manager who has a special presentation or certainly accommodation for our communications specialist.
Yes. So I always like to recognize staff and the outstanding work that they do. Tonight, I'd like to recognize Veronica Lezier, our communications specialist. Veronica received an Excellence in Communications Award from the North Carolina City and County Communicators, or NC3C. 179 entries from 47 different local government organizations were judged by professional communications peers. Veronica was awarded second place in the print category for the monthly employee newsletter we call the Lewisville Insider. She initiated this in 2024. It was created by Veronica for the purpose of celebrating staff's achievements while keeping everyone informed about upcoming events and important updates. Veronica stated, "The core goal of this internal communication is to create a closer work atmosphere and remind us that we're working together to support our residents' needs and help Lewisville be the best it can be." The town of Lewisville is very lucky to have yet another talented and creative individual on our staff. We are very proud of her. If you would help me in congratulating her.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All righty. We do have, am I too loud? Is that, that is pretty loud, isn't it? It's like, pastor, does it sound like a voice from above? Very good. Will you have proclamation this evening? As you know, May is --
Historic Preservation Month.
Am I still on? I'm going on and off. There we are. And we have Michelle McCullough. And Michelle, I believe you brought Noah Reynolds with you this evening. Folks, come on up here. It's always good to see you. We know for sure we'll see you once a year.
Yep. We try.
Noah, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Whereas the town of Lewisville joins cities and counties all across the United States in a nationwide celebration of Historic Preservation Month, and whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for the economic development, tourism promotion, revitalizing of neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas Historic Preservation Month is sponsored by Forsyth County Historical Resources Commission, whereas the Historic Resources Commission's mission, can we put any additions on there?
I'm trying to make it.
Is to protect and enrich the county's cultural, historical, architectural, and archaeological heritage through the identification, designation, and preservation of historic resources. Everything was in three. Yeah, okay. Whereas the Historic Resource Commission strives to promote the use and conservation of historic properties for the education, pleasure, and economic and enrichment of Forsyth County residents, and whereas the Historic Resources Commission strives to educate the public about the history of Forsyth County's built environment, both extant, what does extant mean? E-X-T-A-N-T?
With extant, it's there.
Oh, it's there. Existing, okay, thank you. I'll write that down and try to remember it. And gone, I guess that means it's not there anymore.
Right.
Okay. And to amplify the voices and stories of persons and places traditionally excluded from the historic preservation narrative, and whereas the commission encourages members of the community to participate in creative and fun events related to historic preservation as a way to celebrate Historic Preservation Month, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the town council of Lewisville do hereby declare the month of May 2025 as Historic Preservation Month, and call upon the residents of Lewisville to join the hundreds of communities across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of the town of Lewisville, and that a copy be furnished of Forsyth County Historic Resources Commission.
Thank you.
Should I give it to your boss? Yeah, okay. Good to see you, Noah. Come on in here for a picture. Take my glasses off, so I don't think I need them to read it.
One, two, three.
Thank you, folks. Always good to see you. Would you like to say anything? Noah, would you like to jump up?
Thanks, Noah Reynolds. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm on the Forsyth County Historic Resources Commission, appointed by the county, but I'm actually a resident of Lewisville here, so I wanted to make sure that Lewisville was represented. So I'm glad to serve there on behalf of the county, and especially Lewisville, in an unofficial way. I wanted to point out, we have an annual report that's on our website that you can go look at that talks about the activities that we do every year, and just some of the highlights. This is Historic Preservation Month. We have activities all month long. You can go on the Historic Resources Commission website to find out about those. We also have events. We have an essay contest, essay contests with the eighth and ninth graders around the city once a year. We give tours of Union Station in the past year. We have a historic marker program. We do two of those every year, so if there's any historic places around Lewisville you want to submit for the marker program, please do that. We review national register applications and also designate historic landmarks. We have a new sign program. We've had four or five signs. I think the Arby's sign was made historic, and also the Sea Products sign in the West End. So that's a new program that we're doing. One thing that I think that Lewisville will be most interested in is Heather Fernbach is a renowned historian, and she's been working on architectural history of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. She's expanded that research, and I believe Lewisville's funded part of that, to do a survey of the towns, villages, and unincorporated areas in Forsyth County to include Clemens, Bethania, Kearnsville, here Lewisville, Ruhr Hall, and Walker Town. And that is in publication and should be out in hardback and available to purchase pretty soon. Couple of years, but it's coming. But thank, that'll be exciting, have Lewisville as one of the chapters in there. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Glad you could be with us tonight. I don't see PJ, so I'm guessing he's out on a call, which I suspect that he probably is, so we'll skip. No, he's not.
Speaking of graduations, his oldest daughter's graduating from nursing school tonight. So he was sorry that he could not be here, but statistics will be in your inbox in your email.
Very good. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, now is the time for our public forum. We'll actually have three opportunities this evening for you to talk with the council. The first one is now at our public forum. In just a few minutes, we will have a public hearing on our annual budget. And then, once again, at the end of the meeting, we'll have another public forum, should you wish to offer any comments. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council at this point? Anybody at all? All righty. Madam Manager?
All right. First off, I'd like to start to say a couple thank yous. The mayor, the town council, town staff, all of their hard work during budget season. Thank you for months of preparation, numerous meetings, dedicated time, and always great discussion and collaboration. So thank you all for that. As mentioned, there have been a series of meetings regarding the budget. The initial proposed budget was presented to council on April 10th. Since that time, the budget has been available for public viewing on the town's website and at Town Hall. Three budget work sessions were held on April 14th, April 21st, and April 24th. Tonight, I present to you the proposed budget for fiscal year 2526. The proposed general fund budget is $8,056,278. The budget is balanced with a decrease in the property tax rate from 21.7 cents of $100 per valuation to an even 18 cents per $100 of valuation. That is a decrease of 3.7 cents. This evening, we hold the public hearing for the budget before council. The final budget message will be presented at council's regular meeting on June 12th. The final decision on the proposed budget will also be held that same evening. And I am happy to answer any questions that anyone has before we open the public hearing.
Very good. Council members, any questions for the manager? If not, this is a public hearing on the 2526 town of Lewisville annual budget. Is there anybody that wishes to come before the council and address the budget? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
My name is Brady Allen, 2065 Glen Ferry Court. And I wanted to take a moment during the public hearing and thank the council and staff for all of the work that they put into the budget and all of the collaboration from the council during the budget workshops. I attended all of the budget workshops, and the council was very collaborative during the budget workshop. Even though there may have been disagreements, they all came together for a common conclusion for this purpose of funding the operating expenses of the town. And I particularly appreciate how the council worked together to bring down the tax rate from the originally proposed by the manager, 19 cents per $100 valuation, to the even 18 cents per $100 valuation. I feel that considers those in our community who have a harder time paying their annual tax and keeps those people in mind so that we can care for those individuals.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brady.
Thanks, Brady.
Very good. Anyone else wish to speak? All righty. We will close the public hearing. Council members, comments?
No, other than it was a pleasure to work with everybody again on a budget. It's been a while. But I would, I would second what Mr. Allen said, that the years go by, but the tone and the way that we've always worked through these issues, I've always been proud of how that's happened and been proud to be a part of it this time, so thank you.
Thank you, council member. Anyone else?
I would like to add one thing. I will say, I really, this is my second workshop, so not as many as Tom here has gone through. But I will say, I really did appreciate the approach this year to looking forward. And I know that we're funding a year at a time, but this organization, this municipality has to think longer than just one year at a time. So to think forward to the needs of our town, public works, and other operations, it was great to see us come together to be able to support a growing town with some much-needed resources. Thank you all.
Thank you, council member. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just want to thank the residents that took the opportunity to contact me regarding various items within the budget. And then I also want to thank Pam and Stacy for entertaining every year. Those that know me, I kind of have a litany of questions at the very end, and they really did a fantastic job of answering, I think it was like 18 to 25 questions. So thank you, guys. Thank you to the residents again for your thoughtful questions, for your engagement. We'd love to see more of you out here next year. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jane was moving closer to her microphone. I didn't know.
Oh, no, no. I was just being grateful to the staff and the rest of the council. It's always a taxing time, but this time in a good way.
Or in this case, a detaxing time. For those of you that don't know, every year prior to presenting the budget, the council meets, I think we met for three evenings this time, and we work through the budget. And as council member Huffman mentioned, is that we really try to look forward at the needs of the town in the future. We have not funded our reserves, which is our capital reserves, which is an incredibly important component of our budget, because that is our funding, looking forward. And in this year's budget, we have continued to fund those, or we have picked, we have reestablished the funding of those reserves. And just some of the advantages that we have, advantages that we have by funding them is the building that you're sitting in, it's Mary Alice Warren Community Center, it's Jack Warren Park, all of those, we were able to fund a good portion of them in the reserves so that when it came time to build them, we had the money to do that. So thank you, council. I want to thank each one of you for your attention, for your thoughtful consideration, for your comments. And actually, I want to thank the staff for the great meals. I'm not sure where they all came from. But we budgeted well, and we ate well. If there are no other comments, council members, we're entertaining a motion.
Vote next month, Mayor.
Why don't we vote this one? Let's get it over with. I guess it is June, isn't it, that we do it? Yeah, okay. Well, so no vote. New business, I believe. Stacy, you have our first item.
Yes, sir. Before you, we are recommending changes to the planning board charter. As discussed at last week's briefing meeting, the changes include general statute references, updated language, and some old language being removed, updated references to the comprehensive plan and the unified development ordinance, and then removal of the Lewisville Beautification Committee references in the charter due to their standalone charter that they have on their own. There's no need anymore for them to fall under the planning charter, or the planning board charter, excuse me. Lastly, language has been added to reflect the same policy as our other boards and committees. When we have a quorum present for the planning board to take any sort of action, one of the members present creating that quorum must be either the chair or the vice chair. This has always been the practice of all of our boards and committees, including the planning board. We are just simply adding that language to their charter to echo this practice. So the ordinance tonight before you is 2025-009, and staff recommends approval of this ordinance. And I'll take any questions that anyone may have.
Any questions for our manager? Not want to entertain a motion, please?
I will make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Lawson makes the motion. Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Elliot, I believe you have our next item.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, as previously discussed at your briefing, Agenda Item 6B will formally clarify the rules of parliamentary procedure that apply to your meetings. In 1991, the council adopted the UNC School of Government Suggested Rules of Procedure, with the exception that we require motions to be seconded, which the suggested rules don't require. Since 1991, new additions of the suggested rules have been issued, resulting in this current issue, this current version of the book. The rules that are included in your packet are based on these current School of Government rules, again with the exception of we require a second for a motion. And your action here will clarify that we're not still using the 1991 version of the book. In addition, the rules included in your packet, in there, the town clerk has cleaned up some other minor issues. For instance, the book has blanks for things like insert name of town here, and, you know, insert council's meeting time here. And the clerk in your version has appropriately customized the rules to insert those type of details. So if it pleases the council, a motion can be made to approve Resolution 2025-16.
Thank you. Any questions for Elliot? entertain a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Huffman, was that you that made the motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Huffman makes the motion. Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Pam?
Okay. Next, we have Ordinance 2025-010. Construction of the Gateway Project is complete, and North Carolina DOT has given their approval to close out the project. And so staff is proposing that we close out the Capital Project Fund for the Gateway Project and take the remaining money that's in that fund and transfer it to the Roundabout Project, which is at Lewisville-Viana and Robin Hood Road. The amount that's in the fund right now is $1,021,302, plus any accumulated earnings. So Ordinance 2025-010 will accomplish that.
Any questions for Pam?
Have a question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Pam, was that completed according to schedule? And if not, did you receive extra income for additional days?
Stacy, would you like to take that?
It was completed per schedule. There was only one hiccup, and that was with the sign that we were waited on for materials. So we worked with the contractor in order to extend their contract just by a month or two because of the delay in those materials, but on schedule and on budget and everything.
Good news.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I will say that the most recent meeting of our North Carolina League of Municipality Members and, where were we? We were in Chapel Hill. Yes, Chapel Hill, thank you. We lose track of time and place and everything else when you get to be my age. But anyway, I had probably a dozen mayors come up and say they had an opportunity either going to or from their city or town to drive through Lewisville. And fortunately, they took our Lewisville exit, and they had so many wonderful comments about how it looked, the appearance of the town, the friendliness of the town. And as they traveled down Schallford Road, they said, "It's amazing how you've been able to maintain a small-town character with so much that's happening out there." So evidently, we've done well on this one, I hope so. And I think we were under budget, weren't we?
Uh, maybe, I don't think we were. I think it was right on.
Right on it?
Yeah.
Okay, not even a penny under? No, okay. Pam says, huh?
And Pam watches those pennies.
Okay, we got into the contingency then a little bit. Counsel, what's your pleasure, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Huffman makes the motion. Ms. Welch makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Pam, you have the next item.
Okay, next, we have Ordinance 2025-11. We have a Capital Project Fund for the construction of a multipurpose path along Lewisville-Viana Road. Several council meetings ago, council decided to not pursue that project. But it does have some money in it. It has $382,969. Staff is recommending that we close out this Capital Project Fund and move the remaining, the money in it, plus any accumulated earnings, to the Roundabout Project.
Any questions for Pam? Just a little context on this, folks. We had been approved and received initial funding for actually two segments of sidewalks. One was out Lewisville-Viana Road, and the other was out Country Club Road. Unfortunately, what COVID has done to us is it has increased the cost not only of materials and labor, but everything else. And we find that the original sidewalk project quadrupled in price. So we recognized that we couldn't afford it as a town, so we used the money that we were funded for to put it, funded, to put back into the Roundabout, because the costs there are also going to be three or four times. Nothing that we did wrong, nothing that the state did wrong. It was just unfortunately, it's a sign of the times that everything is more expensive now. So we've moved that money there, and I believe Pam will go ahead and vote on this one, but our next item is to do the same thing with the other sidewalk that we had. Now, the good news is that we have reestablished our reserves, and we're starting to put more money into those so that at some point in the future, we will have our match required to bring those projects back to the town. With that, I believe we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I don't think we have a motion.
You do now. I'll make one.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson.
the money that's in it to the Roundabout Project, and that balance is $281,485 plus accumulated earnings.
Very good. Any questions for Pam? What's your pleasure, council?
Move approval.
I'll second it.
Dr. Sadler makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Stacy, administrative reports, please.
Yes. So we've got a lengthy list here of stuff coming up in May and June in the town of Lewisville. First, I'd like to bring everyone's attention to, we are going to have a public engagement session regarding the updates to the Unified Development Ordinance. It is scheduled for Wednesday, May the 14th, from 5:30 until 7:30. It will take place here in this room, council chambers at Town Hall. It's an opportunity for residents to drop in during that time, ask questions, and also share feedback about our new document. Next, a reception for the unveiling of the art at Mary Alice Warren Community Center will take place Friday, May 16th, at 5:30. This is to unveil the new mural that will be located in the community center. Residents can come and have the opportunity to meet and greet the artist, and I'd like to mention that this mural was made possible through a grant received from the Schallford Foundation. Again, that's Friday, May 16th, at 5:30. Also, on May 16th is our first movie night at Schallford Square. Twisters is going to be featured. It will begin at dark, and there will be concessions available. Monday, May 26th, town offices will be closed in observance of Memorial Day, but then that evening on Memorial Day, May 26th, our first concert in the square will take place from 6:00 to 8:00. Our Military Appreciation Concert features The Embers with Craig Woodard, along with a special Memorial Day tribute by American Legion Post 522. Next, the blood drive, the next blood drive at Mary Alice Warren Community Center will be held June the 4th. On the June, June the 6th, from 1:00 to 5:00 is the next CPR class opportunity at Mary Alice Warren Community Center. And then lastly, we also like to put in a plug for our resident survey. It is still open. Households can visit our website and continue to take that survey until June the 30th.
Very good. Any questions for our manager? Plug for, if you are out there and have not completed the survey, it's really important that you do. We use the information gathered through this survey to do our planning, to take a look at how we're doing in your eyes, but we also prioritize a lot of our projects and a lot of our activities coming up over the next five years with the information that you provide. So please, if you haven't, go to LewisvilleNC.net. There'll be a link there to the survey. Only takes just a few minutes to do it, and we certainly appreciate your time to do that. Gee, this is your first-ever clerk report. Angie?
Sir, Mayor and council, before you tonight, you tentatively have a work session scheduled for another budget work session on May the 15th, if needed, and we are seeking what the council's pleasure is regarding that meeting, if you would like to continue to hold that, or if you would like for that not to be scheduled.
Council members, any cleanup you want to do, or are we good? Good where we were?
Good.
All right, scratch the date.
Also, sir, before you is just a reminder that there will be a board and committee collaboration session on May the 28th, from 5:30 to 6:30. Also, a volunteer appreciation on the 28th, and that is at 6:30. That will take place here at Town Hall, and council has been invited to attend the appreciation portion of that. I sent out an email today. It may say it came from Dora Moore, but it is from me. And I believe that is all that I have. No, sir, there's the approvals at the briefing and the action meeting on April the 24th. That's a different item, I believe.
That's okay. Yep. Thank you, Angie.
Angie, you were almost flawless.
I was almost.
But since it's your first meeting, I've been doing this for 26 years, and I am not flawless at all, as you can see, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty, Stace?
Yes. So approvals at the briefing and action meeting that took place on April the 24th. Council approved Resolution 2025-017 that awarded a paving contract to Cactus, Cactus Service Surfaces. That's a mouthful a little bit. In the amount of $77,057, and this contract is for the current paving that you see taking place at our new public works facility.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, as you probably are aware, we meet the first Thursday of every